Thank you. First on the agenda is recognition of visitors. There is another opportunity towards the end of the meeting as well if anybody would wish to speak. We would ask you to please come to the microphone and state your name clearly so that we can put that down as a matter of record. Please know that we ask you to keep it to three minutes and be respectful of other people that may want to speak as well. So if anybody would like to speak at this time, there's a microphone there, there's a microphone over there, and we'll just take turns. Thank you.
I'm super short. Hi. My name's Julia Dahl, and I want to start by saying that I think everybody in this room wants exactly the same thing, which is our kids back in school five days a week. In order to do that, we have to minimize the spread of the virus. And it's for that reason that I asked the board and the superintendent to please issue an indoor mask mandate for our schools. My son's going to be attending Cornwall Hudson Elementary School in the fall, and like every other child in that building, he'll be unvaccinated against the COVID virus. For them, the danger is exactly as great, if not greater, than it was last year when sending our kids into crowded classrooms seemed unthinkable. I'm not here to argue science. Every single reputable medical and scientific entity in this country recommends a mask mandate for schools: the CDC, the American College of Physicians, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the New York State of Health. I'm asking you to please follow their guidance. Yes, you will make some of your neighbors angry, but if you issue the guidance and the mandate, you have strong legs to stand on. If you don't, when kids become sick and classes close, you'll have to bear the responsibility of knowing that you ignored the available guidance. Masking is annoying, and there are downsides, totally. I hate that my son's teacher and his classmates are not going to see his beautiful smile, but guess what I'd hate more? Remote learning. On page 16 of the health guidance that Superintendent Dade set out, you'll see a really good reason to mandate masks in our schools. When a child in one of our classrooms tests positive for COVID, and we all know this is going to happen, if she and the kids around her were wearing masks, the state says they don't have to quarantine. That's huge. The bottom line is this: A mask mandate makes it more likely that our kids get to stay in school this year. In the discussion about masking, I've heard a lot about choice, but I hear less about community. We're a community in Cornwall. The minute I moved here, people were welcoming to me and my family. So why is that community spirit suddenly gone when we need it the most? When each of our choices so dramatically affects those around us? Why have we forgotten that we don't ever get to do everything we choose for ourselves or our kids? We don't get to choose the curriculum that our kids learn from. We don't get to choose their teachers. Our girls can't even wear spaghetti straps to school. Not that long ago, when you and I walked into a restaurant, you were asked if you wanted smoking or non-smoking. But as a society, we decided that our collective health trumped a single individual's right to choose to smoke indoors, because quite literally, we breathe the same air. And that's what we're talking about: the greater good of our kids being together in school versus an individual's desire for their child not to wear a mask. We all know how easily viruses spread in schools. Let's make this decision to limit the spread of COVID and keep our kids in school. Please issue a mask mandate. Let's show our children what we can do when the community sacrifices together for the good of the whole.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sally Gonzalez. I am here tonight representing my family, my two, almost three, kids in the Cornwall City School District. We want our freedom to choose as parents how to care for our children. I am advocating for parental choice. We should have the right to choose whether our children are masked or not in school. There is no scientific or public health justification for mandating children to wear masks in school. In states like Florida, Texas, and others, the courts have banned any mask mandates as it violates our rights. Our school's district is forcing our children to burden, to bear the burden of preventing the spread of an illness that poses almost no serious risk to their own health. Furthermore, since teachers, staff, and other faculty members are all, have all had the opportunity to be vaccinated, the perceived risk of spreading the virus to children is low. My oldest son is in second grade and has been struggling to learn how to read. His teachers have been wearing masks, and as an eight-year-old, imagine how difficult this must be to learn phonics simply by sounds. Taking away their freedoms to socially interact, physically play together, and express real emotions is a violation of their freedoms. Please allow children, or please allow parents to make their own informed decisions on how, on their own child's health and needs. Masking must be optional for proper development of these precious children. Give us, their parents, their choice.
Thank you.
Brandon Calori. We're allowed, you know, to be respectful to the three minutes. We're going to keep it short. So I'll just say it's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. The size of a virus particle is much too small to be stopped by a surgical mask, cloth, or bandana. Wearing a mask to prevent catching COVID-19 or similar-sized influenza is like throwing sand at a chain-linked fence. It doesn't work. There has been one large randomized control trial that specifically examined whether mask protector wearers from the coronavirus. This study found that mask-wearing did not reduce, at conventional levels of statistical significance, the incidence of SARS-CoV-2 infection. There have been hundreds of mass studies related to influenza transmission done over several decades. It is a well-established fact that masks do not stop viruses. Part of that evidence shows that cloth-faced masks actually increase influenza-linked illnesses. Bacteria are 50 times larger than virus particles. As such, virus particles can enter through the mask pores, yet bacteria remain trapped inside the mask, resulting in the mask wearer continually exposed to bacteria. All parties mandating the use of face masks are not only willfully ignoring established science but are engaging in what amounts to a whole-school clinical experimental trial. This conclusion is reached by the fact that face masks used during COVID-19 incidents has been reported in scientific opinion pieces promoted by the CDC. Opinion pieces. The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. Wearing masks comes with a host of physiological and psychological burdens. These can interfere with task performance and reduce work efficiency. I have a son entering kindergarten and a daughter entering high school. I want my son to see all the faces. Furthermore, the mandatory mouth mask in schools is a major threat to child's development. It ignores the essential needs of a growing child. The well-being of children and young people is highly dependent on the emotional connection with others. Masks create a threatening and unsafe environment where emotional connection becomes difficult. There is no efficacy standards on child-sized masks and respirators under OSHA, but there are proven microbial challenges as well as breathing difficulties that are created and exacerbated by masking children.
Brandon, I would ask you to wrap it up, please.
With that being said, we are advocating for five days, full-time, no hybrid, masks being up to the parents. We, as parents, demand our voices to be heard. We have sat idly by for too long. Our children deserve better than the last 18 months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm short. Hi, I'm Casey Walsh. Since my child was forced to wear a mask, he has struggled physically, mentally, and emotionally in school. He has become easily winded, had a panic attack because a teacher wouldn't allow him to take his mask off to catch his breath, has thrown numerous anger fits because of the frustration of what school has become. My happy, school-loving child has turned into an angry and frustrated one. I am not here to have the masks debate. I'm here to advocate for my child and those children who are also struggling. Those parents who want to put a mask on their child have the right to do so, as I should have the right not to. All I ask is to allow us our right as parents to make the best choice for our own child, because it is our choice, not the government, not the state, not the district. Mine, as a parent, my kid, my choice. My husband and I decided we have no other choice to withdraw our son from the district to homeschool until this experiment on our children ends. This district and state has overstepped their boundary of telling me what I medically have to do for my child, even though it's harmful to him. Our parental rights are being attacked, and if we allow this to continue, our kids will be lined up in the nurse's office getting injected with an experimental vaccine without our consent. These are our children. These are our decisions because it's our rights as parents, nobody else's.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Kristen Koch, and I am also a parent in the district who feels that children should be learning, and it should be masked. It should be the parent's choice. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, NICE, and Orange County Department of Health are not elected bodies, and they do not represent we, the people. Their guidelines, recommendations, and mandates are not laws. As you know, the Emergency Youth Authorization for Masks has expired, and it is, and informed consent is necessary to participate in any medical studies. Virologists wear self-contained suits with oxygen to protect them from viruses. We all know that the diameter of the virus is so small that it will not, the mask will not filter it out. It's not even approved for smoke inhalation, which has a much larger particle size. The masks that we purchase from stores actually come with liability warnings that state it does not protect from coronaviruses. And assuming masks actually did filter out the virus particles, these masks now become biohazard waste, and you have no proper protocol for their disposal. The Board of Ed is not a medical provider, and you have not provided us with any peer-reviewed clinical trials that we can review to give you our informed consent, and it is not an approved medical device. As a parent, I refuse to allow my child to participate in the social, medical, and psychological experiment. Masks are muzzles, and they instill fear of breathing clean air. Munchausen Syndrome is pretending you have an illness. Masks are for the ill. But Munchausen by proxy is pretending your dependent has an illness, and that is a form of child abuse. Masks inhibit learning and are a distraction. They cause dermatological conditions, tooth decay. They increase harmful bacteria in your gut, and actually inhibit the immune system from functioning properly. Our children's dental health is an indicator of their overall health and life, and I have a research paper and articles from the Journal of Oral Science for your review. 165 years ago today, it was, a precedent was set by a New York State Supreme Court Judge Lucian Birdseye, and he wrote, "The public health is doubtless an interest of great delicacy and importance. Whatever power is in fact necessary to preserve it will be cheerfully conferred by the legislature."
Kristen, excuse me, can you just wrap it up, please, now?
Sure.
Thank you.
...and affected by the courts. But it can never be permitted that even for the sake of public health, any local, inferior board or tribunal shall repeal statutes, suspend the operation of the Constitution, and infringe on the natural rights of the citizen. Our children have been playing together at camp, on the playground, and eating out, traveling all summer without masks, even with this variant. And all the teachers who have wanted to receive the vax has already done so.
Thank you very much.
When we set the Pledge of Allegiance, we said liberty and justice for all, and liberty means freedom from arbitrary, despotic, or government control. There are superintendents in our state who are allowing parent choice. There should be no division. Masks are no masks. There is one choice, and it is a united option, that is the parent's choice.
Kristen, thank you.
Be the leaders in this community that we know you to be, and allow parent choice.
Thank you.
Hello. So I do not have prepared remarks, as I've been very busy at the new private Victoria, sorry, Victoria Halfpenny. I have two children. I have an incoming eighth grader and a soon-to-be sixth grader. I'm not here to debate masks. That's evidently another, a better topic to be covered by others here. What I am here to ask is that should a mask mandate happen, that we ensure that the arts move full speed ahead. Last year, the art educators did the best they could. There were lots of rules and restrictions, and I get it. But there are plenty of schools around the country that have mask mandates, social distancing rules, that perform in-person concerts and allowed them to happen for their students. I have pictures of them. The school I attended in Indiana, full-fledged performances happening. So I implore you this year to please give the educators the tools they need, encourage them to go outside, encourage them to have more space if there is space, but just encourage them just a little more, because I have a music-loving daughter who is desperate to sing and play in band and perform, and a whole 'nother year of going without that. And my grandmother went to school and, went to college simply because she got a scholarship in orchestra. So I don't want any other kids to miss out on these opportunities. If kids can wrestle indoors with masks, and my son can play soccer outside, the arts kids deserve to have their time to shine as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Beth Polliata. First, I have a few questions. As I understand it, the state and the county have left any in-school mask mandate up to the individual district. Who then in our district has the final say? Is it decided by one person? Does the board vote? Do we, as parents, have a say? Some districts have sent out a poll to see where families stand. We did not receive one, which was disappointing. I would never ask anyone to take their own mask off. How can it be okay for anyone to force one on myself or my children in order to receive a public education? My children should not be used as guinea pigs. No one knows the effects of long-term mask-wearing. I can talk about the short-term effects, though. Depression, fear, confusion, headaches, social issues from not being able to read facial expressions and cues. My little ones think teachers and friends are mad at them. This is causing great anxiety, and it is changing who they are meant to be as kids in a free society. Guilt is being forced on innocent children. It is in no way my children's, in my children's power whether someone lives or dies. All adults have the ability to get the vaccine and wear a mask, all free to make that decision for themselves. I am asking for the freedom to put a mask on my children only when I feel it necessary. The school district should give us the choice to mask our kids or not. I also deserve the right to choose which medical professional I take guidance from. If the district creates a mandate, then you are deciding for me. That is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rhanna Liebert, and I'm a COH resident. I have three six, three kids in the school district. So as you all can see, the number-one question on every parent's mind right now is masks, what the mask policy is going to be for the new school year. Thanks to the high vaccination rate in the state and in the country, both now at 60% of the entire population, our children have been allowed to have a blessedly normal summer again. They've attended camp and school without covering their faces, breathing freely. They've gone on long overdue vacations to crowded places. They've played with all their friends and done all the normal things that kids are supposed to do, and that they were denied for over a year and a half, and with no issue, no spread, at least in our local community. Now, the CDC and state officials are suggesting that because of new variant, kids will once again have to suffer. Our kids will have to suffer for the sake of a virus that does not threaten them in order to protect people who choose not to protect themselves. We're no longer in a state of emergency. The authority to govern our district has thankfully been restored to you, the local school board, superintendent. I implore you to look at the science that politicians, and unfortunately even health agencies, have ignored. Put our children first. Don't take away the blessed normalcy our kids experience this summer after being deprived of so much for so long. Please do as at least one neighboring district has done: give parents the freedom to choose whether their kids will wear masks to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhanna. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent's update. Mr. Dade?
Thank you. So just wanted to make sure that our board and our community were aware of the messages that I sent out this past Friday. Again, we are collaborating as superintendents across Orange County with various medical experts to make some decisions with our opening plan. For planning purposes, our goal is to have our opening plan out for the community this, by this Friday. So look for more information to come by week's end, and that's all I have to update.
Thank you very much, Terry. Next item?
Can I just ask one, one follow-up?
Could we, could we not?
Okay.
Okay. I'm just going to move on to the consent agenda. We can definitely do that at the end, though. Okay, Brendan?
Okay.
Oh, did you want to ask Terry?
To Terry, to Terry, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I know that that one question that has come up just with parents looking to make decisions was if there was a deadline for deciding on things like homeschooling, you know, because people are waiting on this decision. Do you, does that Friday deadline come in time to still make those other decisions?
Yes. So families will still have the opportunity to make those decisions after Friday.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters. We have items two through 21. Is there anyone on the board that wishes to pull out any item at this point in time? Okay, do I have a motion to?
I'll move it, Nancy.
Motion, thank you, and a second?
Second.
So these are items two through 21, recommended by the Board of Education. We approve the following consent agenda items as approved, as submitted, I'm sorry, by the superintendent of schools. So we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carried. So that, under new business, non-consent, I will get there. Okay, so we have, just a quick update report on committees. Back in June, we had brought up the, the board committees. The committees are policy, facilities, communications, audit, visitation, scholarship, and the handbook committee. The board members were asked to get back to me by a certain date to let, let me know what committees they were interested in. You're supposed to not, you can't have any more than four board members on a committee, because then it is a quorum of the board. If you had five, and then it constitutes a meeting. So we're not allowed to have more than four members on a committee. Should more people come to a meeting, they can come as a member of the community instead. So this is just where we're at right now, who had expressed interest to me up to this point. It's certainly a working document. It does not need to be approved. I just wanted to update the board on to where we were at and who, who had gotten back to me on the committees that they were interested in being on, and that's kind of where we're at at this point. We certainly can finalize everything by September. I know there are some questions out there, and we can also discuss them at our retreat next week when, when we meet. So that's just where we are with that. The next item is appointments for the 2021, 2022.
Nancy, can we, can we linger there for a little bit?
Sure, go ahead, John.
Thanks. So, so I, I don't know if you meant June or, or July when you said?
In June, it was June.
The, the request went out.
It was in June, yes.
I do know that I missed the last board meeting, which was in July. I apologize for that. I was, I was, I was thinking I was going to be able to zoom in, but I got a frantic call from, from Nancy that explained that I couldn't zoom in because I couldn't be sworn in because I wasn't in person. So that's my mistake. I was, I was away on the West Coast, and obviously, if I had known that, I probably would have made arrangements. So I could have been here in person, but I wasn't able to get back because I was in West Coast when I found out that I couldn't be here. Anyhow, so, so as a result of that, missing that, that meeting, as well as being some, some challenges, my mea culpa is I was, I was late to inform Nancy of my interest on the committees. My name was put on a committee that I did not express interest in, but wasn't included on committees that I had previously served on.
Scholarship?
And I did express, albeit late, before this document was, was posted to Nancy, of my, my interest to retain a position on the audit committee. And my, my position is I still would like to serve the district and the community and this board as a member of the audit committee. After I was chair for the last three years, I think, if nothing else, I've, I've earned the consideration of the full board for that assignment, if you will.
Okay, thank you, John. What, John, can I ask?
That's position one. My, my next.
What committee did you not know that you replaced on? Because scholarship?
Scholarship.
Scholarship?
Because I didn't even know we had a scholarship committee, because I was on a scholarship task force that I thought was exploring whether we were going to have a scholarship committee or not. And I guess, again, I'm still catching up from, from my illness.
Yeah, but no, you were on, you did express interest in being on the committee, John. That I know.
That, I was, I expressed interest in being a task force to explore whether we were going to establish a committee. I didn't realize that we had already established a committee. And I'm, I'll have to go through the records on when that was established. So, so my understanding of what had transpired at the board level from governance perspective is, you know, a little different than what I'm seeing here. Obviously, I'm at, at, in error, and I will update my, my understanding about how things have occurred. So, but just bear with me. The, the other statement that I'd like to make about these assignments that I see, knowing that I'm only on one, I'm the only one who's only on one, not two, is that I noticed that there are chair assignments. And, and that struck me strange, because, you know, at least when I was the chair of the audit committee, I believed in self-determination and that every committee would meet and determine who the chair was, much like when we were all elected on the board, we all congregate together and discuss who will be the, the leader, the president, the vice president, in different assignments. So I was, I was a little taken back when I saw that chair assignments already made without any kind of discussion at the board level. So I'm just wondering how that happened, and, and I know I don't want to tie up tonight's meeting with, with this kind of inside baseball, but I just want to raise my objection to what I see here, and I hope it gets straightened out over the next month or so.
Nancy?
Thank you, John.
Nancy, if I may, I was someone who brought up the fact that historically, boards in general, and specifically one I sat on for 18 years past, in my past life, the president and the vice president basically discussed chair people and determined it, not the individual three people among the committee. One of the reasons that that was for is because there was a need to switch and move people around. And in all fairness, the reason for audits is to have different people, not, and, and John, this doesn't have any, it's not specifically to you, but I don't think anybody should sit on the audit committee for four years. And I don't think anybody should be chair of an audit committee or any committee, because it gets, it gets very close. You, you're supposed to have new, fresh eyes come You're supposed to have new, fresh eyes come in and look at those things. At least, that's my opinion. And as far as, again, choosing chair people, I'm going to kill Nancy because she made me chair of the policy committee, probably one of the most disorganized people you'll ever meet, but I asked, I remember in June, and I did send it over, and I had asked to be on the scholarship committee, but the first two choices went on here. But again, I really think it's important that people move from committee to committee where, and also, we have a new member in the board, and that new member should be on a committee and fill each spot. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll have, go ahead, Nina.
I'd just like to say, this is my third year on the board, and my, I've served on the audit committee for two of those, and this is my third. And I put my hand up for that specifically because I have a background in finance. And I think that's important when you're dealing with outside auditors. I mean, we're a third level of oversight, right? You've got the district, you know, even a fourth level. You've got the internal auditor, then you've got the external auditor. So, in terms of, you know, respectfully, people sitting on a committee in regular boards, the finance committee can be the same people regularly, just based on the fact that they have skill sets. And, you know, Jim having, or John having run or chaired that committee over the last couple of years, I felt like he did a lot of strong work. And really, he ran an RFP with the rest of the committee last year. And I think, you know, if it's not in a chair role, certainly, his participation on that committee has brought a lot of savings to the district.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next?
And for what it's worth, I would just second that. Without John's input, frankly, I don't think I would be an effective audit committee member, if not a competent one. He's really helped bring me along, so I would second everything that Nina just said.
Thank you. Okay, so, and again, we'll continue the discussion on that. Appointments for the 2021-2022 school year for Orange County School Boards Association, NISBA, and Legislative Liaison. So, Larry will be the alternate to Orange County School Boards Association. They do meet the first Wednesday of every month out in Goshen, and so, we are looking for someone who would be able to attend those meetings and would be our regular person. If for some reason you can't make it, actually, Larry, am I correct that the entire board is welcome to go?
Absolutely.
Yeah, anybody can go at any time, but?
But there are voting members.
Yeah, so there's voting members. So, we do, is there someone who, at this point in time, we do need to let them know, who would be happy to be our liaison for the Orange County School Boards Association and is available for the first Wednesday of the month?
What time of day do they generally?
It's in the evening.
It's in the, is it late in the evening?
It starts at seven, ends nine, and they're pretty religious about that.
Okay. I don't think I can necessarily take it on.
You say it starts at seven?
Yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can, in Goshen, yeah, I can't.
I'll be the member, I'll be the voting member, and Larry and I can figure out. Because there are going to be some that I can't go to, but I'll vote. I love to vote. Thank you, Margaret and Larry, both of you, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to be our representative to NISBA? They are having their convention this year down in New York City. It's in October.
Nancy, I should mention that the voting part of the convention is done virtually.
Okay.
Two weeks, I think it's two weeks before the convention itself.
Thank you.
I would be willing to do that. I did it a couple of years ago, but I think in advance of some of the voting, I'd like to be able to kind of poll the board and?
Yeah, you've done that, yes.
Get more input for that. So, I would do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And Legislative Liaison, Brendan, are you still interested in staying on, is that?
Yep.
And I'm happy to be the alternate if someone else would like to be an alternate also. You can let us know. That involves going up to, if it's live, it's going up to Albany, and for us, there would be a set time to meet with Senator Scoofus and then Assemblyman Schmidt. That's how, that's how that has worked in the past. And so, that's, you know, if anybody else is interested, you know, definitely let us know on that. Okay, the next item is approval of John Redmond. Be resolved that as our Board of Education has formally endorsed John Redmond for Area Nine NISBA Director at a previous meeting, we now authorize our board president, Nancy Bryant, to cast one vote for John Redmond from the Cornwall Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
And a second, yes. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. And appointment of interim athletic director and high school assistant principal. Whereas, an unanticipated vacancy exists in the position of athletic director high slash high school assistant principal as a result of the resignation of the employee from that position, and the school district intends to conduct a search for the candidate to appoint to this administrative vacancy. And whereas, in the meantime, the school district needs to fill the position on an interim basis until such time a new candidate can be selected. Whereas, a retired administrator, Jennifer Simmons, is willing to accept such appointment as the interim ADH S A P from August 30th, 2021 until June 30th, 2022, or sooner if a new candidate is selected sooner, subject to receipt of a Section 211 of the Retirement and Social Security law waiver. It is therefore resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Jennifer Simmons is appointed as the interim effective August 30th until June 30th, 2022, or sooner, pending upon the hire of the new candidate. The rest, as per document, and recommended by our superintendent of schools. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And number five, Smart Schools Bonds Presentation. Mr. Dade, Mr. Sotlin, and Mr. Davishaw. Thank you.
Good evening. We just wanted to provide our board and community an update on where we stand with our Smart Schools Bond Act. This isn't new information, except for the very last part. So, just by way of recap, back in 2014-2015, the state, by way of vote, was able to approve districts for this funding from the state. Our district allocation was approximately 1.5 million. The eligible categories are classroom connectivity, classroom technology, school security, and safety by way of technology infrastructure. Cornwall Central School District submitted an initial plan in the 1617 school year. You can see what was approved based on our current state back in 1617. 213K for classroom technology, 944K for connectivity, and then 421K for future technology needs. As our community well knows very well, we were unable to start last school year with choice for remote instruction because of the technology infrastructure challenges that the district faced. The great news is with the arrival of Mr. Danishvar and the strong work of his technology team, our teachers working through countless feedback and providing us with information of what's going on in the classroom, parents providing information about the experience streaming in and things of that nature, a lot was handled to get us to a much better state for technology infrastructure here for the district. So, if you look at our previous needs, 944K is no longer needed for wireless and broadband connectivity due to the hard work of Mr. Danishvar. So, what we wanted to present today is, as a result of that hard work, what we would like to do to move the district forward. That is, to catch us up with 21st century that the rest of the nation is really doing. The rest of the nation really isn't talking about making sure that we can connect in our schools and things of that nature. So, what we would like to do is use the remaining 1.35 million to fund our standard classroom model. Standard classroom model is, if you walk into any of our classrooms right now, there's always going to be a way for a teacher or a staff member to present. What that presentation looks like is a little bit different depending on what school you're in, what classroom, things of that nature. Unfortunately, we even had one or two classrooms where they were still pulling down the screen that I remember as a kid, and unfortunately, that someone happened to hold it down in some classrooms if the screen wasn't working, to interactive TVs in other classrooms. So, this would bring us consistency across the district. We'd also like to move our district to one-to-one fully by the end of the 2122 school year. That's a one-to-one Chromebook for every student, grades one through 12, a one-to-one iPad for every kindergarten student in our district. By way of development and what one-to-one districts have done, this is one of the best paths forward for making sure our students have what they need to be successful in the 21st century. The last thing that you'll see in a standard classroom is, so, we have presentation, we have what students need, and now, we talk about what teachers will be equipped with. Currently, every teacher has a desktop for every classroom. We would be providing a large Chromebook for every teacher as well, should they feel that they want and need that for delivery of instruction. So, this would move us light years ahead. Unfortunately, when I got here, I felt that we were still back in the 80s, so this really gets us to where we need to be as a district. Two questions, two points of information I wanted to provide is to give Sean just a few minutes to say, talk a little bit about what happened, just high level. How do we get from not being able to provide choice and streaming and that confidence that I just did not have in our technology infrastructure to current day, to current day, really being in a much better place for connectivity? I will say, this was a great example of trial and error. We basically threw 944K at a solution that Sean found just wasn't necessarily the problem. He worked through lots of different solutions to get us to where we are today. So, Sean, if you could spend a few moments there. Yes, John?
Part of the presentation, and you're right, Sean is just the man. He's the man of the century, if you ask me. But I noticed, and this is all great, and thank God we're moving into the 21st century, right? We're going to get there eventually. This is beautiful. I have a brother who actually is a teacher. He teaches Latin. And he abhors Chromebooks for his role. It's good for the kids, but for all the things that he does, especially with, you know, what, he works in a private school and the like. They found Chromebooks obsolete already when they rolled it out. Have we ensured that the new generation or next generation of Chromebooks are sufficient with our teachers' needs? Is that something?
John, one of the greatest thing about Chromebooks are, if you give a five-year-old Chromebook to someone, because it's Linux, it just runs just fine. Now, in your case of the teacher that you mentioned, your brother, they might be using application that runs on Windows only, and also, as Terry said, the Chromebooks for the teachers will be bigger than the Chromebooks for the students. But the nice thing about Chromebooks, you, because it's Linux, unlike Windows, it don't require a lot of support, they don't require a lot of support from us, and also, it just runs beautifully.
So, another key point that Sean was bringing up is, Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we move forward with a different device for things like our high school math department and things of that nature that need a different type of device for instructional capability. The other tough thing with what device for staff members is maintenance and cost. So, the other thing that we need to make sure that we do is, if all of our money is spent with the rollout of one-to-one without any plan for replacement and refreshment of devices to move us forward, we're going to be not a one-to-one district for very long. So, that maintenance piece of laptops versus Chromebooks is a tough question for districts to grapple with as well.
So, just last, I mean, is it fair to say that the leadership involved in the math department and leadership in technology, everyone's coming together, and this is the best way to get all of those things? Are they going to?
Yeah, so absolutely not. So, there's no way, there's no way that we're going to get agreement from everyone. One of the things that I wanted to put an asterisk next to Chromebooks for teachers is, we're going to put it out by way of survey. If teachers don't feel that it's going to benefit their practice, they check no. All of this money, as we've done today, can be amended to make future decisions. So, if our staff doesn't need the Chromebooks, Warwick has had them in their district for their teachers, and it's going well for them. So, we would want to look at that further, but this has been a moving target, that's why I'm presenting it today. We weren't even talking about devices back at the beginning of the year. We were only talking about infrastructure and how do we make sure that our students and families and teachers can connect. So, again, if we send out the survey and teachers don't need it, great, I'll pull the money back, and we'll use that funding for another endeavor with Smart Schools Bond Act.
Is there a better resource of having a system, a plan?
Yeah.
Does it still have?
Yes.
Yeah, also, John, every teacher in their classroom, they have a PC, which we, that's part of the things that Terry asked me to, just very 30-second update, what we did in September, really nothing, everything was slow, so what we did, we replaced every computer for every teacher, upgraded or replaced them. On the wired and wireless, we replaced, updated, reconfigured every switch, firewall, router, our wireless access points. When I looked at it, they're very good brand, but nothing was working. So, we replaced all the old ones, we upgraded the new ones, our controllers were four years old, we upgraded that. And finally, what happened, May 11 or 12, when we reopened, we found out, we went around, we also bought testing equipment to test the wireless. Everything was working just fine, both strength and bandwidth. And we have some on the side just in case in September, if a principal comes to us and say, hey, this room doesn't work that well, then we can add to it. But when I went to Terry and Harvey and Megan, I said, we don't need to put in a wireless access point in every classroom, we're working just fine because the new access point, they can go up to 400 devices. So, what, the basic idea was the equation has changed.
Just one last point that I just want to make sure I'm being completely transparent with the board, community, staff. There's certain things that we're just not going to be able to put out to families by way of what device would best, would you prefer for your child? There's a cost factor. So, that's something that we take into consideration is, what is our allocation? What can we afford, and what can we maintain to realize one-to-one moving forward? So, to John's point, if there, of course, there's better devices out there, but it all comes down to what's going to be practical for the classroom, useful for the classroom, and be able to be maintained in the long term moving forward. So, all those things are pieces that we'll continue to grapple with. Surveys will continue to go out. We do seek that feedback, and then we would just have to come back to the board and the community for what do we want to put our money towards moving forward, should any other resources be needed by our families and staff. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, so, if a teacher has a specific technology requirement for their curriculum, I assume they're going to be met. You had mentioned the math department. I'm sure there are things in the science department they may need and so on, but those
I'm sure there are things in the science department they may need and so on, but those things are going to be addressed.
Yes, and they were even as we engaged in COVID. Just think of some very technical subjects where you have to think about, how are you going to display this for students? So that has been discussed and addressed.
Terry, briefly, just as a point of clarity, Sean or Terry, so in the classroom, there is a desktop computer? And there's presumably a login, like it crosses over?
Correct. Every class, every teacher, if they don't have it, they will do it, but every teacher computer was upgraded or better upgraded to all-in-one. All-in-one has the camera, microphone, just in case if they want to be in a meeting. So every teacher's computer, not only they have a PC, it's been upgraded or replaced since September.
But I was going at there, there is a PC in the classroom available to them, and they have the option at this point, through this Smart Bonds Act, to have a Chromebook offered to them.
Correct.
Right, but the Chromebook, they can also, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, they can also, it's theirs, they can take it home if they want to work on it.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Jeff?
Sorry, if I could just ask one further question. I think a lot of the questions have been, you know, thinking sort of like the high school level, and here it says we do want to go one-to-one for all grade levels. Is this something that we think we need at the elementary level to be a one-to-one district?
Yes, absolutely. Without reservation, without hesitation, our students beginning, I see a kindergarten teacher or two, our kindergartners are digital natives. They not provide devices and things of that nature for instruction, just would hold them back compared to some much more progressive districts. So yeah, we absolutely want it K-12. What that looks like at each level, like John said, we're still working with principals and staff of what will that look like. High schoolers can obviously take their devices home easily, we'll have processes in place. It may look different for a first grader, a one-to-one maybe in the classroom, one-to-one versus taking it back and forth and us having to clean off jelly from keyboards, so.
As the parent of a soon-to-be third grader and first grader, let's hope so.
Yes, yes. So one-to-one is that they would each have a device, what that, where that device goes and what those processes are could be very different depending on the younger ages to the older.
I know also, a couple of years ago, the technology committee, teachers that were on the technology committee were tasked during the summer to kind of put benchmarks in. So like, by the time you're out of fourth grade, you should be able to have keyboarding skills, you know? So it's not like you're not coding when you're in fourth grade, although some of them can. You know, the teachers were able to really know their, they know their children and know kind of, you know, like, let's get some basic benchmarks down. So I think that's kind of turned out to be a pretty good thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Terry. Okay, so we're up to recognition of visitors again. If there's anyone that would care to come up and speak and address the board, again, the microphone, please state your name, and we would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone at this time?
How are you? Kevin Lovell, I'm the father of two incoming first graders at the COH. Wanted to give you, I want to say thank you for letting me speak. A little nervous speaking in front of a bunch of strangers, but I just wanted to bring up one thing about the masks. I don't think it's fair for any of us to tell one family or other what they should do and how they should feel about it. I think there's some passionate arguments for having a mask mandate, and there's some really passionate arguments for not having a mask mandate. What I want to urge the board and some other people around here is to shut the TV off, shut the news off, put your phones away, and go out and look, go out and watch a child, specifically, I have young kids, watch a child with a mask on. Young kids can tolerate a lot of things, and they could tolerate a mask on their face. Yeah, sure, no problem. It's not on the right way, it doesn't fit them properly. I have a lot of experience with PPE from my job. If it's not on the right way, it's not protecting you, it's not doing anything for you. So now we're forcing a child to put something on their face that doesn't fit them the right way. I don't care what you tell me, it doesn't fit the right way, they're not wearing it the right way. It's just a nuisance for them, and at that point, it's just torturing the kid. That's how I feel for my own children. I can't tell somebody else how to feel that way, but that's what I think about with masks. I think that if they're not going to do what they're designed to do, then we shouldn't mandate something like that. I just think that's not fair. Again, we should give the parents a choice to say, you know what, I think for my family situation, I'm going to put masks on my kid, and that's fine. I go to the park almost every day that I'm not at work with my kids. I see little kids running around, most without masks, some with masks on. That mask is frankly disgusting by the end of the two hours you're at the park. Covered in dirt, it's covered in mucus and all kinds of other stuff, and that's not, that's really not helping a child also. It's just not doing what it's designed to do. If you want to put a medical-grade mask on a kid and have it fit properly, that's fine, I'm sure it will protect them from whatever we're trying to protect them from. But I think from our standpoint, from a realist, from a parent who's shutting the TV off, putting my phone away and just watching what's going on, kids are not wearing the mask properly, it's not fitting them properly, and we can't expect them to do that. I do agree with everyone in here that I think five days in person is probably the most important thing for our children. My kids, last year, we were fortunate enough to send them to a private school, which we did not want to do. We moved to Cornwall because the town I lived in was so envious of Cornwall School, their sports, their community, everything like that. I was finally going to put my kids into the Cornwall School District, and I couldn't. I put them in a private school. They did kindergarten five days a week in person all year without one issue, and they had a great, great year, and I'm grateful for that, but I'm also excited to send them to Cornwall, first grade. I think, I'm hoping for a good school year for them, but I think we really just need to be smart about.
Kevin, please wrap it up.
Yep, no problem. I think we just need to be smart about what we do and give parents the choice for a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leo Porter, and I am here.
Could you just tip that down a little bit? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, can, your name again, please?
My name is Leo Porter, and I am here to request from my family. I have a child who is 10 years old, going into the fifth grade for the first time, moving from the middle school. He will be with kids that are 10 and 11, which, you know, unfortunately, he's not eligible to receive the vaccine. I would like to know if the school is, from my understanding, are you guys having the online learning or you guys have eliminated that? I'm not sure on that. Can someone answer that?
No, discrimination is the main.
No, okay. So if you have not made any decision, please, I would like to speak for the families that are concerned about having to send their children into school that have medical issues. If you could continue on with the online teachers, the teachers that my son had was excellent, she was heaven sent, the kids in that class, they have such a good rapport. I like the fact that it wasn't just Lee School or COH or Willow, it was a combination of all of these kids that were in the same virtual class, which they'll get to meet each other in the middle school as well as high school. That's a good transition for them to get to know each other. At that time, at that point, at that point, they're still good friends, they met up during the summertime. But my request is to please continue with the online learning for families like myself who have children with medical issues that may not be able to take part into the school community, like, you know, I would love to send my child, but because of his medical issues, he's not able to. And he missed being with his friends, and I would love to be able to send him, but having him become ill and to be hospitalized, which he has been because of his illness, I don't want that, but I would like the option for you guys to please, if you can, continue on with the online schooling until he's vaccinated. When he becomes vaccinated, if he does well, then I may take a chance to send him back for in-person learning. But if you could consider that, I know there are not a lot of parents expressing that because they're not here to express that, but me, I would like to express that for my family. If you could please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have, go ahead.
Hi, Jessica Cruz, I have two kids in the district, a seventh grader and a 10th grader. I'm not going to talk about the masks, don't need to. I just want to address the athletics, like the art program. You know, the kids that have all summer volleyball occurred indoors with masks, football training. So just to continue that, if there is a mask mandate, to just make rules around that and not push everything to the spring like was done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board comments. John, we're going to start with you, please.
Thank you, Nancy. First and foremost, I just want to thank the community for their vote of confidence in electing me, or re-electing me, I guess, back to the board. I greatly appreciate that, and I look forward to contributing the best I can to our kids' future and making sure the district is continuously to improve. I'd like to talk quickly about technology. I meant it when I said Sean Deniswar is what I consider the man of the century. You know, I know people use man of the year and all that stuff, but what he is doing, what he has done in coming here with his expertise is really getting us back to where we should have been at the start of the 21st century, and I'm grateful for his continuing work and the work of his staff. They're working tirelessly and they're getting the job done, and thank you, Sean. I just wanted to put that in public. The school year has started. I've seen athletic teams. I think Jessica just alluded to the teams that are practicing already. It's the start of the year, even though academics haven't started, teams are starting to meet and get ready for the fall season. That's very exciting, and I hope we have a successful campaign, whether on the field or in the classroom. And one of the things I think we all should take into account is there is still a lot of uncertainty that exists in the world right now, okay? A lot of uncertainty. We don't have a governor yet, right? We have a governor who is going to in the next, is it six days, seven days? I'm not sure how many days. But we're going to have a governor, and that governor's going to set policy, and that governor's going to make pronouncements, and those things are going to cascade and fall their way down to the educational system. It's going to affect the county, and it's going to affect us as a community. And I think as much as the administrators and the leadership of the district office right now is making plans, I think we all need to think the following adage as that plan comes out this week. No plan survives contact with the enemy. It is a military adage, and it is very true in this environment. So as much as there's going to be a plan, there are other forces at work that still have the initiative, like the new governor and others, to put what I'll call roadblocks or other types of disruptors into that plan. So I think in a highly-charged environment, we need to be patient, we need to understand that the 1st of September is quickly approaching, but there are other things that are going to happen within that timeframe that really requires us all to use level-headed common sense and be patient. For I do believe if we do that and apply appropriate risk measures when risk exists, that we will have a productive year with activities, with academics, with arts, and five-day-a-week in-person instruction. But like most of the parents that spoke tonight, I have my reservations, and I am just, my faith and confidence is in the process, and I look forward to seeing what happens, knowing that if things need to change, I'm sure they will, hopefully for the better. I think we've learned a lot from the past, and hopefully, as a community, this year will be even better than what we were able to salvage from last year. Thank you.
Let me start with, I wanted to congratulate the new hires as a result of the budget being approved. We have some new technology integration specialists as well that will be able to help in a lot of different areas with the technology. That kind of goes over to the technology department. Sean, you and your team have done amazing work, and I really appreciate it. I actually spoke with Wilson from Poughkeepsie the other day, and she could not stop singing your praises and all the great things that you did when you were in Poughkeepsie. So your successes and your obvious intellect and ability follow with you, which is great, and we're really lucky to have you. Lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who made public comments. When I used to sit at the board meetings before I was on the board, I didn't understand why there wasn't a conversation that happened during that time. I want you to know, we hear you, but the meeting, the way that the meeting works is it's not a time for discussion. We do hear what you're saying, which is great, and it is discussed, and then, you know, follow-up information will come out, but I don't want you to feel like you're not being heard or that we're not paying attention. We are, and we're hearing everything that you're saying. So thank you for coming, and thank you for your enthusiasm and your input. It's really, it helps us kind of, you know, form where things are going to go, and I really do appreciate it. So thanks.
Thank you. So like John, I'd like to, I was not at the last meeting either, I'd like to thank the community for their vote in putting their faith in me to represent them, and I look forward to serving for the next three years. Like Margaret, I'd like to thank everybody tonight for your participation, for respectful participation. We've all seen some pretty nasty videos out there, so I'm glad that that is not happening here in our community. We can all share viewpoints calmly, rationally. I'll address the elephant in the room. Masks in school, I will make it short and sweet. Few quick points. It is less dangerous than the flu for children. We do not wear masks typically during flu season. There are countless studies that the CDC has put out in the past year, and on all of them, it shows that spread in schools is lower than spread in the surrounding community. Teachers, and to the one gentleman's point, there has been only one randomly controlled study. That's the Dan Mask Study of Denmark. If you haven't seen it, I recommend you Google it, and it is not. It showed two groups randomly selected, one wore masks, one didn't. There was no statistical significance in whether or not they contracted the COVID-19 virus. This was conducted last spring. So masks are not proven to work. What is proven to work? The vaccine. Teachers and staff have had ample opportunity to get vaccinated if they choose to do so, and hopefully, they have all chosen to do so. If it's not a risk for children because it is less dangerous for children than the flu, and the masks are not protecting them, and the teachers have had the opportunity to get vaccinated, who are we protecting by having our students wear masks? I think if parents want to make that choice, of course, they should have that choice. I think masks should be optional. I believe Monroe Woodbury came out today and made that statement that they are recommending that in their neighboring school district. I think at this point, it's pretty clear that COVID-zero is not happening. We're going to have to learn how to live with this disease. It's time to get on with life, it's time to let our kids be kids. So I would like to recommend for the guidance that comes out before Friday, that we make masks optional for the upcoming school year for our children. Thank you.
I'd like to thank John for his comments about their last year. We had made lots of plans, and two days before the plan was supposed to be implemented, we were told we couldn't, we had to do something else. So a lot of those decisions last year were out of our hands, and hopefully, that will not happen this year, but I'm not holding my breath. I appreciate all the input that we've received tonight. I have made copious notes. I'd also like to thank Sean and his team for what they've been doing. A lot of the stuff that we have going on would not be possible without your assistance. Thank you. Thank you.
I think, you know, one of the things that's made it late years of difference from last year to this year is we're looking forward to five days in person, which I think is just, you know, the opposite. the optimal way for us to be in school. So I think that's a huge victory that we all have to be thankful for. There have been so many impassioned views from parents this evening about their children in terms of masks, no masks. And I assume, Terri, you and others are going to come to a decision on that in the coming week. I don't know whether we've considered any sort of survey of the parents as we did on various things last year. But I think it might be meaningful to, you know, take that tally and see where people are coming out. I'd like to thank Sean. I think, you know, the last year was very challenging with everybody being remote. And I think that it has made a huge difference, the work you've done, and obviously, the savings to the district in terms of how much money we now have to put technology in the kids' hands. So thank you for that, and thank you for everybody who's working on the district and trying to, you know, the teachers, the staff, the administration, who's trying to address all these questions, which, you know, are not easy for anyone.
I'm the last one. I'm the last one in the row. I daily, I think like all of us, I watch what used to be the news and has become opinion. So what I do is I go through five different stations. And hopefully, after the fifth one, I glean some kind of information that may be factual. And that's sad. And it's just the way it is. And unfortunately, I remember people like Walter Conkite, oh my God. And nobody would have known that he was a liberal, like an extreme liberal, because he delivered information and news. And I don't think we get much of that. I do think we get a lot of opinion, and I think we get a lot of misinformation. And unfortunately, like usual, it's our youth that suffers, and that never changes. You were all very passionate, and frankly, the fact that you just showed up on a Monday night in the summertime is very admirable. I am sure that there are many other parents, that everyone here was very civil. And my eldest son lives in Fairfax, Virginia. And if anyone knows the Fairfax School District, it's all over your news. That's not so civil. So I personally thank you, and that's why I love living in this community. I don't know, and I'm not going to pretend to know, who is partially right or a little bit right. But I know that everyone in this room believes in what they're doing and believes and cares and worries about their children, as I worry about my grandchildren. I can only say that I've been on the board now a year, and I firmly believe that the administration truly and this board care about your children and put them first. I know I do. So in the weeks ahead, tough decisions will be made, and someone will be unhappy. And that's always the way it is, and it's what we teach our children. But hopefully, it will be for the greater good, whatever the decision, for all our children. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Nancy. So I want to start just by thanking everybody who showed up. And everybody has touched on the tone of civility, and I second that. I've, like Larry, I've been jotting down a lot of what people have been saying. And I've been impressed by the way that everyone is framing their arguments. So kudos to everybody who had the, who spent the time to formulate their thoughts and had the courage to step up and express them. I am a parent like everybody else, so I spend some time putting my thoughts together. So in deference to the person I was 24 hours ago, I will read those thoughts. So last spring, as some of you might know, I became a vocal advocate for bringing kids back to school five days a week. I came to that position because I saw the research being done by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Harvard School of Public Health, who all came to the same conclusion, that schools only needed three feet and masks to mitigate the spread of COVID, not six, which the New York State Department of Health have been enforcing for about a year. Today, those same institutions, the CDC and AAP, have concluded based on recent data that K through 12 students should be wearing masks in school. This is not the conclusion I was hoping for. All summer, I've been looking forward to my daughters returning to school with no masks, no restrictions, so they can be in drama club, singing openly, not having the restriction of a mask. But I can't take the word of the CDC and the AAP when they tell me what I want to hear and then ignore them when they tell me what I don't. So I support masking in schools. However, I know that not, usually, I have a good ear for stopping for applause, but I ran right through that one. I know not everyone quote-unquote "trusts the experts," which is a position frankly, I'm also sympathetic to. The experts have been wrong a lot lately. But if we put all that aside, how some people fear the virus, some don't. Some people trust the CDC, others don't. I think there's an even better reason why kids should be wearing masks, and it's a theme that's been hit on already. Nobody in this room wants to go back to the hell of remote learning. Nobody wants to hear the word pivot ever again. But if we go back to school without masks, with infection rates already going way up, we run the very real risk of numbers getting so high that we'd be forced to go remote. And that's a lot to risk. There are far too many kids in this district who have fallen behind because of remote learning, whose futures will be altered if we have another stop-and-go year. We have to do everything in our power to avoid that from happening. And if we don't, if our numbers in Cornwall spike and we are forced to go remote, that will be a colossal failure. And unlike last year, we won't be able to blame the governor or the state health department or anyone else in Albany and beyond. That failure will be on us. Not just us up here, but all of us. We will have failed because we will have allowed something we don't want, wearing masks, to get in the way of what these kids need, full-time school. To those who say masks don't work, I won't get into a tit-for-tat, my studies versus your studies kind of thing. As I said before, the same institutions that I trusted and many others did last spring say masks work to mitigate the spread in schools, and I find that compelling. Also, spread in schools has been lower than community spread, which I interpret as meaning that the safety measures at schools, like masks, work. To those who say this is about giving into fear, I will say this. I don't fear the virus. I've been vaccinated for months. When I'm in a small group, I don't wear a mask. When I'm in a large group like this, I do. I'm also not particularly afraid of my kids getting COVID because I know that even with Delta, the odds overwhelmingly suggest that they would get a mild case. But I am terrified of my kids going back to school two days a week for the second straight year. So yes, I hate masks. I think they're uncomfortable. I think they look stupid. I think I look stupid right now. But until kids can get vaccinated, which should only be a few more months, they are the best tool we have for keeping them in school every day. And that's the goal. The goal is not to control people or to take away anybody's freedom. The goal isn't even for kids to go to school every day with masks. The goal is for kids to go to school every day. Let's not lose sight of that. Thank you.
So going last, I get to say the word. I echo a little bit of whatever I said. Oh, Nancy gets to go last. I get to echo a little bit of what everybody has shared here. I too appreciate everyone in the audience that has, or in the community that has come out and showed their face this evening. And for those of you who commented, again, I appreciate all of your opinions and positions. They are all valued, and they all mean something. No one person, I personally don't believe no one person is more correct than the other in their opinions. Very trying times still remain in that we have, Mr. Dade has a very difficult decision to make with his team coming up, one that will not please everyone. I'm quite confident of that. But I too, and with Brendan here, and it's critical that we have our children in five days a week. And to that end, whatever that takes to achieve that goal, I believe that it's our responsibility to do that. Because us as board members, it's our responsibility to advocate intimately with the district heads that we do what's best for the children, for the children to be in school, to educate them. That's our goal. That's our task. That's what we are tasked with here. So it's a challenging endeavor Mr. Dade has, and, you know, we will support you with your ultimate decision. Sean, thank you for your, all your efforts. Because we were at one place that wasn't the greatest, and we're beyond that now. And we're leagues ahead of where we were and pushing forward in that venue every day. So I thank you for your efforts and your team's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Lewis. I'd like to thank the community. I certainly want to thank you for your respectfulness. It just goes to show what a great community Cornwall is. And so I truly thank all of you, parents, community members, staff members that are here tonight. It means a lot to see you, and it certainly means a lot to all of us, the respect that you continue to show. So I truly thank each and every one of you. This district will be making some tough decisions, absolutely. And it depends on, sadly, it's going to probably depend, not sadly, hopefully not sadly, but it's going to depend on perhaps some decisions that are out of our hands. I do want to go back to a couple of things. Thank you, Sean, for your technology upgrades. Absolutely amazing because it would have been such an incredibly tougher year without that. And thank you for moving us forward. In addition to that, the upgrades that have been made since last year, not necessarily school year, but beyond that, before that actually, with ventilation and HVAC and cleaning upgrades and hand sanitizing stations and all of that really put us ahead of the curve to a certain extent. And for that, we are very fortunate, and I thank Walter Moran and his staff as well for continuing to do all that. I want to just, for those of you that don't know us that well, I want to just, in my opinion, this is a very unique board and administration. Not that I've surveyed other boards in the county and other administrations, but we have a larger percentage here sitting on the board that have children that are in this school district or grandchildren that are in the school district. A few of the board members and admin have children that are in college. I have grandchildren not in this district, but they are going through the same thing. And I have a grandson who'll be starting kindergarten. So I certainly understand where everybody's coming from. And I got to witness firsthand, in person, remote learning with my granddaughter, who was in second grade, and that was a nightmare. It was, I don't even know how everybody did it, how parents did it all year and how the teachers did it all year. So it's a struggle, and it certainly was. So we certainly hope we will have the five days of instruction this year. We also, our administration, we have, Mr. Dade and Mrs. Ergenio both have children in the district. So that makes, I think, us, they certainly are experiencing all this firsthand. Mr. Solin has college-age children. And so this is just, I think it brings a different perspective. And I wanted to let you all know that, that we certainly do understand as a board and as administration what you guys are going through. So I thank you all so much. I thank you for your input. We certainly listen to each and every one of you. And I hope to see you at another meeting in the future. So thank you very much. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, just kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carried.